Thank you. This is the Monday, March 19th, meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. We'll start with asking for a motion to approve the bills.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of February 26th, 2018?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made in a second.
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes from February 26th? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Do we have a student rep tonight, Mr. Jason? We do not. We do not. Anyone from the PTA tonight? Not yet. Special needs PAC tonight?
No. Kelly's bothering me.
Thank you. Anything from the CTA tonight?
Nothing.
Thank you. Is there any public comment tonight? There being none, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, so we're going to start off with, you should have a budget book, budget version B. And we'll start off with a quick little presentation and overview of this, and then if you guys have any questions, I'll talk about, when we go through the presentation towards the end, I'll talk about sort of the next steps that we need to take right now. We don't need to like vote to approve this tonight. I know that was sort of a question. But I think we want to just make sure that we have a direction for moving forward to continue presenting the select, the FinCom, the Selectmen, and that kind of stuff, and then we can vote while I get into it. All right, so before we get into the whole thing, I just want to play this. This is the video that was put together for our...
No, no, I can... No, I'm blocking you there.
This was put together for our Leading the Nation campaign, and I just figured it kind of sets the scene of what we're trying to do.
For young students, Clinton Elementary School supports each child's academic, emotional, developmental, and creative needs. We believe in giving them a strong base of support for lifelong learning and growth. We believe in introducing every Clinton middle school student to a world of possibilities by expanding the horizons and encourage them to be active participants in their academic lives and embracing their diverse community. We believe in preparing students for life's next chapter at Clinton High School. With one of the highest graduation rates in Massachusetts, we prepare students for their future. Whether it's an Ivy League education, gain full employment, or learning a valuable skill in apprenticeship, we will guide their way. We believe that every Clinton student can find their greatness.
All right, so I think that was the next video. I know our marketing committee talked a little about it. Mr. Morrison, his class ran with it, but just kind of that... She actually made it, huh? You were involved in that, wasn't you?
Not really.
So honest. Take the credit.
Mr. Morrison, please extend our thanks to the team that put that together. It's just tremendous.
It was excellent.
And it was submitted as part of the Leading the Nation video contest to the State House, so we'll see how that goes, but I thought it was a nice, just a nice little nutshell about the district. So, so that leads us into our strategy. Remember, we talked about if we get a vertically aligned, comprehensive curriculum, provide support to teachers to ensure best instructional practice is being used in each classroom, utilize assessment data to tailor instruction to meet the needs of all students, and support engaged students and parents, and instructional efforts will be more focused and efficient as resulting in improved student achievement. So that's the underlying thing. We want to make sure that we're tracing back what we're trying to do in our budget to improving student achievement. A lot of this stuff is the same as we've seen in previous iterations of this presentation. The, this one is the same, okay? We're talking about some of the leadership. This one, literacy coach, oh, here we go. This one's a newer one, the Director of People's Services position added to the budget. So that was a change from the last iteration of the budget between the February and March. And that's about it. So pretty much that's the same, you know, these outlines of how we're supporting the strategic objectives from the strategy is also in there. And it's all in your, I'm not going to go, it's all in this book, so if you have the book, you can read it. I think a key point, we'll talk about key points in one second here. So preliminary budget summary. So if you remember, this is what we gave in January. In January, we presented a budget that had a 7% increase to the general fund, about a 6% total operating expenditures increase. In February, we came back with Superintendent Budget A. The general fund had been knocked down to 4.97%. Total operating expenditures were 4.04%. Part of that was because we moved some money to warrant articles, some was just reductions. We walked through all those cuts, or, you know, changes in our budget. Now we're at Budget B, okay? So Superintendent Budget B now has us down to a total operating expenditures increase of 3.07%, which because of some of the, because of budgeting less money in circuit breaker has us at 3.94% of the general budget, so the increase to the town. So that's where we stand right now. I'll talk more in depth about where we are with warrant articles in a minute. Some key things about this budget and this number. How did we get there? So from A to B, we reduced $227,373 in the budget, all from the general fund. We did that by eliminating the proposed Career Vocational Guidance Council position. We had that budget at 54,229. We did a reduction in music teachers due to a retirement, where we'll have going from 3.4 to 3, saved us about $37,000. Salary adjustments for retiree replacements, one of those was mid-year retirement this year. Once we had the replacement, we were able to put in actual replacement salary. Elimination of three ETL positions saved $207,000. The creation of the Director of People's Services cost, it's budgeted right now at 110. And then transfer CHS credit terms to warrant article was $20,000. So that's how we came up with $227,000 in changes to get to that number. My goal was to get us in the threes. You know, I got the operating is just 3.07, which keeps the general fund at 3.97. Some key changes, one big thing in there is the elimination of athletic fees and creation of new sports. So right now, 100% of the athletic budget is in there, all right? So in the past, we have had, we've been charging athletic fees, we've been charging $150 off all the reductions and stuff. Right now, we would not need to do that next year. And there also is a small chunk of money, so look at the creation of new sports. That's something that we could talk about if we need to cut more from the budget, bringing back. However, when you look at the amount that the athletic fees actually raise, and we talked about this, athletic fees brought in about $30,000 in income total. I think when you look at the potential for how that could lead to the retention of students or students wanting to stay in the district, I think that that could, we could get that back through school choice or not lose it through school choice out. Instructional leadership positions, district-wide, it's creating the Director of People's Services and Literacy Coach K to six. At Clinton Elementary School, it's the Assistant Principal for Curriculum Instruction. And really, although this one would be housed at the elementary school, we'd also want that position to kind of run K to six as well. And then the Dean of Students position. So basically, as we, the fourth grade moving to CES, as we add more students down to that building, we kind of split this up, so we have one administrator, we'd actually still be, I wouldn't necessarily want to call it administrator, because hopefully Dean of Students stays in the, is still a CTA position, and we would hope to work out a job description. And then the, that would work primarily with supporting students, allowing the Assistant Principal to work more on supporting teachers and working on things like curriculum.
Just keep that Assistant Principal is the current, it's not an additional, that's the current.
Right. Basically replace the current, just Assistant Principal who's a jack-of-all-trades. Yeah, it'd just be, it'd be kind of narrowing the focus and then supporting basically the part that you're taking away of the Dean of Students.
Excellent.
And then adding a special for grades three to six. So warrant articles, right now we have three warrant articles. Textbooks and technology, 99, we're proposing 99 and 180. That's 820 less than last year's was. Capital improvements, right now stands at 126,245. Emergency management and safety is at 173,5, which means the total warrant articles would be 398,000. So that's a lot more than last year, almost double. We can talk about that as far as what the board wants to do, or when we talk to the FinCom and we talk to the Selectmen, we can see what directions they, what they want to go to, what they're thinking. The, to go line by line, I mean, the textbooks and technology, you know, what's the idea? These are things that are considered basically one-time costs. So one of the things that I've been told, at least, and I don't know if this is the true, you know, everyone might have a little different take on it, but at least one perspective on the whole warrant articles is by using warrant articles for what are considered one-time expenses and not building them into the budget, you're not creating a situation where something that is escalated in your budget, now the next year kind of just gets absorbed into things like salary raises or something like that, and then you come back again in the next year and say, well, we need another one of these, and then, you know, whatever that is for capital or for anything like that. So it's a way of the town kind of having some control, saying, okay, we're going to approve that money, but it's restricted just for those specific things. And that way, it can't just be moved into your, moved around. So this is really focusing on, you know, 17,650 is for the science textbooks, that's for here at the high school, looking at making necessary adjustments to the physics curriculum in the physics for ninth graders as we look for the new MCATs test. The interactive whiteboards are for the middle school, flat screen monitors for the elementary school, that's basically for instructional technology for teachers, to set up in the classroom to use with the students. Computer lab upgrades, part of that is for upgrading one of the computer labs here, and most of it's for upgrading computer labs here, to a more high-powered computer lab. And then Chromebooks, and I think there was a few pockets of Chromebooks that that was going to fill throughout the district, and graphing calculators. And as much as I hate buying graphic calculators until TI, the TI company and the AP aren't working together, they're a necessary evil. So, and I think even more so, it's hard to have a, ask a student to buy, to buy one anymore when it's not necessarily something that they really need as much anymore, but they really need it to take AP tests and the SATs. So, so that's that. There is still, although this is built into the, into the article, there is still some money built into the budget in some of these areas. So it's not like, you know, without this article, we're not going to be able to exist, but I think with this type of article, we're going to be able to make more, like a full step forward instead of ahead. This is our capital improvements. So this has gone up since the last iteration based on input from the Director of Facilities. So if you remember, I think originally this article started with the Schindler repair, the hallway tile, and that might have been all we had from the original budget in there. And then basically, based on his assessment of the buildings as he's been going around, the other, those other mostly boiler repairs, HVAC stuff has been, you know, things that he identified, Russ identified as the priorities. He has a very, a much larger list, which I can share with you at some point, that has some of the other things on there, but we, but these are the ones he thought were of immediate priority. Emergency management and safety, the biggest one on here is, so we have the two security cameras for both schools, fire panel replacement for this school, AED replacements across the district, because it is something that's going to be, we're going to need to get in compliance with some new regulations starting July 1st, so we'll have, trying to build in some money for that. The generator replacement is a big one, so $85,000 is sort of a ballpark. That's what I, that's what I was, the number I was given when I brought it up kind of at the building committee about, and that's actually the cheaper version, which might look, which we'd look at doing the middle school generator because it's already wired correctly, that they could already have a transfer switch for the whole thing, so it'd be able to do it a little bit, a little bit easier. So that's one of those ones that this is, you know, this is one that I think we need to work on, work with the, probably still need to move forward with this with checking with the SEMA and the police and whoever else we need to get on board in terms of the, like the generator replacement, what level of urgency is that? Is that something that they need to do now? Is it something they want to wait another year on? Because as far as, as far as I'm concerned, that's not necessarily really for, the generator replacement isn't necessarily for the school day concerns per se, it's to help establish a emergency shelter for the town. So that's why this is sort of that, always that kind of joint one between the, like the town and the school. So our next steps that we would need to do, continue to monitor unknowns, we still have the negotiations in process, we still are standing at the current Chapter 70 projection of a 1.67 increase. Current projection for unrestricted town aid is about 3.5, still looking at circuit breaker. So still monitoring those numbers. We haven't had any new revisions of the budget since we, since we last met, so once we get the next one, we will be able to look at that. Right now, we're scheduled to do a presentation to the Select Board and the Finance Committee. It's currently scheduled for March 27th at 6:00, but that's next Tuesday. So we have, and we have a school committee Monday, because of the snow, we have back-to-back. So if there's any revisions, things we want to talk about tonight, we can share those together on the 26th, and then on the 27th, right Karen and I, and anyone who wants to come, we can, we'll talk to the Selectmen and the Finance Committee about what we have going forward, get some feedback from them. When we did the timeline, we tentatively scheduled the public hearing for April 9th at 6:30, and we do that before our April 9th school committee meeting, so I think we're actually going to post that unless there's any conflict with that. So that's what I'm saying, I don't think we need to actually, our target date for voting to approve a budget would hopefully be April 9th, so that we could have the public comment, the public hearing, we could hear if there's any, any other suggestions, anything like that. If there are, we could make any amendments we need to do in that meeting. If not, then we can, we could just vote to approve the budget. If for some reason there was a major change, we could do it the next, the next meeting. So I think that's still a decent timeline to get us, get us where we need to be, especially when our top meeting is so late. I think that should give us ample time to get it approved. So that's really where, where we are with this packet that I wanted to kind of just highlight. There's a lot of information, I think, in this packet. If you read through it, I have the kind of the letter that talks about some of the key talking points. And the executive summary, I tried to go over a little bit of what each kind of building might look like, talking about the enrollment. I know that I tried to include sort of job descriptions in there for those new positions. They're not maybe thorough, but thorough is not a good word. They're like, they're like a paragraph, it's like a, just a paragraph narrative of it. It's not necessarily, you know, it doesn't necessarily have, you know, what license do you need and that kind of stuff, more like a job description format, but it's more just a one-paragraph type narrative. Talks about enrollment, projected class sizes, what the specialist might look like. Our goal would be to try to provide, you know, our target is, as we're developing this, is to try to make sure we have aligned preps at the elementary and middle school, so that all our entire grades are going to specials at the same time, so that it at least provides an opportunity for collaboration. So that's, you know, I talked about that, facilities, we still have, you know, we still have that improvement of basically additional floating custodian, and the, goes over the district strategies, strategic planning, projected revenue. You can see some of the, Chapter 70, if you look on page like 15, page 15 has the projected revenue, starts talking about Chapter 70 and how that's calculated. You can see the FY 18 comparison on the next one, our circuit breaker adjusted totals. So that's where we get those revenue numbers. There's some on 17 and 18, there's some charts to tell you the circuit breaker revolving account balances, so this is something I know is, you know, brought up sometimes. So our projected circuit breaker balance at the end of this year, end of, sorry, our balance at the end of last, on the beginning of this year was $770,000. Anticipate to get $744,000 in revenue. Our budget for this year called for $995,000 to be expended, which would leave us a projected balance in circuit breaker of $519,000 at the end of this fiscal year. Worth anticipated revenue for next year is $752,000. That could change because the percentage, we don't know the exact percentage yet. Right now, because we're budgeting $750,000, which would leave our projected balance at the end of July 1st, 2019, is $521,000. Why is there a balance in there? That, that's because that's our circuit breaker, circuit breaker, circuit breakers, it's not, although it's kind of a revenue source, it's basically a reimbursement, right? It's a reimbursement that the state gives you for special education expenditures that are over, it's like four times, it's based on a percentage of any expenses exceeding like four times the base per pupil expenditure. So it's about 40, anything over about $42,000, $44,000, you're going to get a percentage back from that. So about, it's like 60, it'd be probably around 65 or so, 68% of that will come back. So it's not really just money, it's a reimbursement of what we already had to spend. So because it works that way, keeping a little bit of a balance is always a good idea, because as students might get outplaced or identified or a change in placement occurs, that's sort of this, sort of one-year kind of delayed suffer. The way circuit breaker funds are awarded, you have two years to get them to spend. So money you get this fiscal year, you have to spend by the end of next fiscal year. School choice revolving, we had $181,000 balance at the beginning of this year. We anticipate $471,000 in. We've budgeted this year, FY 18 budget called for $404,000 out, which would give us a projected balance of $247,000. Next year, our anticipated revenue, we're budgeting conservatively $440,000, because we don't know, that's based on the 87 students at a rate of 500,000, or, sorry, 5,000. We don't know the sped adjustment factors on each of those students necessarily, so that number would most likely go up a little bit, but probably maybe no more than around our 471. Our budget expenses, we budgeted $500,000 from circuit breaker this year, so that gives us a projected balance of $187,000 in the school choice. And I did try to share some information on grants, since we get a little bit over a million dollars in grants. Most of it is in, you know, about half of that is from the IDA, Special Education Pedantic Grant, so the 240 grant, that pays for a lot. Basically, all of that goes to paraprofessional or instructional assistant salaries to support our special education students. So I don't know if you guys have any, and then that kind of gets us into the line by line operating expenditures, and then I did a couple other things in the back, just sort of some enrollment trends, just summarizing some out-of-district vocational stuff, and then our accountability report cards. So if anyone has any specific questions on any line items or things you want to talk about in this packet, and then I do have one other thing to go on if we go down that road, and then I'll move into the next.
Sure. Before we open up to questions, I do want to thank you and Karen and the team for, for this essentially budget book. It's, it's very comprehensive, and I appreciate the detail and the effort that went into it. Thoughts, questions, comments?
The three, I forget what side, the three, there were three positions where you were cutting, was it E L?
E T Ls.
So were those retirements, or is that just?
So right now, one of the, one of the positions was, was vacated. There was a resignation mid-year. So that one, we did hire a replacement, that person was hired knowing it was a temporary, it was posted as basically almost like a long-term sub, a major league. That person was that. The other two are not based on retirements, so they're two positions that were hired, the people in those positions right currently were hired this year. And, but we're working hard, looking at our staff projections right now to try to figure out how we can use our staff as effectively as we can.
That's right.
So we are, I think we're pretty close to solving the puzzle where pretty much everyone would have a home, because we know that, you know, as one thing goes in, and someone's going to, someone's going to give, someone, you know, you cut this position, they're going to bump this person on certification, or if they have the certification, you can do that. So, so we've been working on trying to, trying to get that. So as of right now, we're, we're pretty close. And I think, I'm, I'm pretty confident that by the end of the year, as we see kind of the, you know, there's always some turnover that happens, that we'll be, we'll figure that out.
The only other thing, and I know we talked about this, probably, I can't believe it's almost a year now, the full-time data specialist, which is perfect for the school, is sharing that with the town, sharing that person, you know, because, you know, there's no, there's no IT specialist for the rest of the time. Would that person be, I know their primary job would be here, but...
Yeah, I mean, I could talk to Mike about that.
When we did the, when we did the job description up or whatever, just, you know...
We could see what they, what they might be.
I don't know if they're interested, but right now...
Right now, that position, she really does, you know, we have to do three main reports. We have to do our EPIMS, which is our educate, basically everything everyone to know about the teachers, our, our SIMS, which is our students, everything you want to know about students, and then we have to do the SCS, which is basically like the schedules that links the teachers and the kids. So there's a lot of reporting that needs to go into, all that stuff. I mean, they know, they know every, every day a teacher's been absent or present, they know every grade a kid's got in every class, and they can look at each teacher, what grades they've given, so. So right now, that's a lot of what she's working on, and doing some of the, like the website and just overall management of that. But I think as we continue to try to work with the town, working at efficiencies, I think that's a, that's a, yeah. And we even talked about it in terms of even with our Director of Technology, of looking at who could, you know, how we could help provide this more tech support in general to the town, so they're not calling somebody to do that.
Cool. Thanks.
I just needed some clarity, and forgive me, because I think I might, it might have been a meeting, but I wasn't here, and I don't think, but, so I understand the transition to the focus of the Clinton Elementary School Assistant Principal.
Yeah.
And then the Director of People's Services, but what was the Dean of Students?
Okay. So the Dean of Students, so do you figure, we move the fourth grade down, I think the total is, it's like 800 students basically that are going to be in that building, not necessarily all at once, because you've got pre-K with some coming in and some coming out, but you're going to have like 800 bodies or so enrolled in. So the idea is having the Assistant Principal, a lot of times what ends up happening in the Assistant Principal is they end up spending a lot of their time handling more sort of supervision-type things and almost, you know, just sort of putting out fires, right, a little, something that happens, and, you know, checking on the lunchroom, checking on recess, talking to a couple kids that had a disagreement, that kind of stuff. So our goal is to try to have the Dean of Students available to kind of support more of that just supervision and support of the students from that standpoint. By doing that, that's going to free up the Assistant Principal role to really be someone who's able to work on curriculum and able to get into classrooms to do observations and kind of do more, more of that stuff. So it's just sort of, you know, once we have more students down there, kind of dividing that. Because a lot of the, the other thing is, a lot of the discipline, disciplinary things that happen in an elementary school are not of a very severe nature, right? Most of them are things where the kids come down and you're going to be able to, to process with the student, call home, do those types of things. There's not a ton of, you know, suspension hearings and that kind of stuff. So that's why we thought that the Dean of Students position would be able to help support that, so that we could look for more of that curriculum addition.
And you said that, I'm sorry, the 800, that's after the fourth grade moves to the middle school?
The, when the fourth grade moves to the elementary school.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. When the fourth grade moves to the elementary school, we will be over 800.
They'll be right about a little, yeah, a little moments around.
Oh, okay.
Have you considered doing a cost analysis of a social worker versus a Dean of Students? Because what you're describing is not necessarily a need of a disciplinary role of working with the kids, counseling the kids, supporting the kids.
So our goal is to try to keep the Dean of Students in the CTA as more of a, not a true necessarily administrative position in that sense, so that I think it would actually definitely go up the posting for that. It probably would be geared towards someone who would have more of a adjustment counselor type license. So I think that's really kind of our, our... So I think that's really kind of our vision for it, but we're trying to just give it a little more of that designation as sort of a, like second or third in charge there.
Right, because I don't know if the public understands, but to suspend a kid, they actually would have to give you permission as superintendent, right?
Right. A little grade three, they have to go through...
The times have changed where they really don't want to be sending kids home, so.
Yeah, so it would go through, that's why it'd have to go through the, it would have to go through the principal, it'd have to go through the superintendent to be notified. It still has to go through all the hearings and everything if you have it. So there really aren't a lot of suspensions or things like that at the elementary level. And then I think by keeping that other position as the Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction, it still also leaves that, you know, that person will be housed there, it still leaves a layer of support there so that if for some reason one of those people is out of the building, we still have two people there who can run it or whatever, whatever the case may be. So I think that it will provide us that additional support so we can make sure we're supporting all the kids.
Anything else?
And then as far as the out-of-district and the breakdown?
Yeah.
I see that, that there's one area that really took a spike from two previous years as far as breaking down the data, because it looks like there was a lot of success as far as potentially either kids aged out, graduated, or brought them back in district. But there's one category, diagnostic testing, that really had a huge spike.
Yeah.
Can you speak to that? Is that kind of across the board, K through twelve, or is that, you know, are we seeing that at the upper level? What is going on?
I think, I think it's a mix. I mean, I think it is sort of across the board. I think we do see that we have some students who are in the younger grades in elementary school who are, you know, some who are new to us, let's say, that we've, we've had to, you know, look and see if there's the appropriate placement for them. I know we had a couple at the, at the middle school where it was kind of a somewhat type thing where you're looking and realizing, is this an inappropriate placement? And we've had some at the high school. And you think this is a nice transition, if you want me to transition into the next, the next section, which is looking at an alternative school proposal. So you've got a handout, a separate handout that we gave you. So we looked at an alternative school. What this would serve, we students are unable to succeed in the traditional school setting. And I think with this, you know, what does that mean? I guess there's a lot to it. But this would be more on, you know, we'd be looking specifically probably more at high school students who it was more of a behavioral type situation. Sometimes these, sometimes these diagnostic settings might even, might even get triggered by, you know, one or two particularly severe behavioral incidents that we want to look into. So also, an alternative school would be able to support us for students who are suspended or expelled after chapter two-two-two of the Act of two thousand and twelve. We do need to provide educational services for all students who are suspended or expelled so this would provide that there, or for long-term suspension expulsion. So what would this alternative school look like? I proposed we'd house it at one fifty School Street. I would run it three days a week from twelve to four. So students who go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from twelve to four. The primary feature an online curriculum, so there would, there would be an expectation of being able to access and do work on your courses at home or at another location in addition to the twelve to four. We would be able to monitor that. And each student who was in this school would have an individual learning plan. For each student's, the individual learning plan focused on their individual graduation requirements and the additional services they might need, and looking at transitions to college and career. One of the things we would try to incorporate in this would be things like work-based learning. So if there's an interest that you have, we can get you actually working and earning credits maybe for, for working in a, in a field. So we could try to, try to help support the transitions that way. Who would probably, you know, what would I staff that alternative school with? I'd like to have four, four staff members attached to it. An alternative school administrator, an alternative school counselor, a content area tutor. Content area tutors, who might be more than one person, and an instructional assistant. And if we look at the cost, our resources needed. So one day dedicated room at a hundred and fifty School Street, ten to fifteen working Chromebooks or computers, which we'd be able to pull together. Four certified teachers, one in each content area. So this would figure, three days a week is about a hundred and eight sessions. So if we figure for two hours a day, basically we could hire high school teachers to come down at the end of their day and work with the students as kind of tutors. Because remember, the students will have, the way that online learning works in a lot of these platforms now, students would be taking courses, they would actually have a teacher through the online course. Not our teacher, it would be a teacher through the, through the company. This would be the instructional, the certified teachers will be there to provide tutoring, additional support. If you don't understand what your online teacher's telling you, those types of things. It's a way to get sort of like an extra help session. They could also provide tutoring for people who are suspended. The instructional assistant, more for supervision and making sure there's always kind of two people in the room. Software is estimated eighty semester course registrations at two seventy-five each. That's based on one provider's numbers for online courses. We could look at, you know, multiple ones before we do any type of contract. Eighty semester course registrations would probably cover the cost of about ten students in this program. So I think twenty-two thousand is probably high, because if you have ten students at least to start in the program, certainly would. Alternative school counselor, figure about halftime of an approximately sixty thousand dollar position, so call it thirty thousand dollars. Alternative school administrator, call it approximately halftime of, say, a seventy-five thousand dollar position, thirty-seven-five. So if we had all of that, total cost needed to run it would be one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred dollars. In the current FY nineteen budget, there are three students who we feel are strong candidates to be serviced by this program. Those three students, we pay right now a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in tuition alone for those three. So if we were able to bring those three students back and open this alternative program, the net savings would be twenty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Then it doesn't include other students who'd be able to access this program in lieu of an out-of-district placement or one-to-one tutoring. So for example, next year, if something, you know, if there was an incident where now we have another option before we got to the, you know, forty-something thousand dollar tuition program, we'd have another option for supporting those students. And I think if it was successful, I think we'd start at the high school level, but we could always talk about, once we got it going, is it gonna be appropriate for an eighth grader or a seventh grader or those types of things as we look at each individual situation? So I think there's some options here for being able to basically, you know, save some money, keep some students in district. This is not even counting the, when I did that strictly, the tuition savings. It's not including the additional transportation savings. But I didn't do that on purpose because I thought we might be able to use our van, our own van during the day to help transport them to workplaces or bring them in. And so there might be additional transportation costs that we incur with that. Do you have a question?
But, so even though you didn't include that number, each one of those three students would have been about fifteen thousand dollars per year for transportation, correct?
Yeah, but I think two of them were in the same placement, so maybe only two runs, so yeah.
Okay, but just so the public understands how expensive it is.
Yeah, it could be about seven, seven seventy-five, yeah, about thirty thousand dollars additionally maybe up to in, in transportation.
So your number is very conservative, how much you're saving.
Yes.
So the students that would be eligible for this program, is it the parent's decision whether they go elsewhere or do they definitely stay in district if we have this to offer?
It would depend on the situation. So I think if there was a, like, you know, if someone was on in I E P and had a current placement that would be, that was off-site, then we would have to, we would have to have that meeting, a team meeting to discuss it. But I think sometimes what ends up happening is, and not all the time, but every once in a while, you have a situation where a student can't handle a school day, typical school day. They don't necessarily have an I E P, it's more of a behavior, as I mentioned, a specific incident or something that kind of triggers that. In that case, this would give us that alternative as opposed to now where you kind of have to shop around and figure where can I put someone for forty-five days to try to figure out how we can help. And then, and that's where those kind of diagnostic assessments come in. I think typically, you know, the goal would be, I think the alternative school would kind of work, you know, you'd stay more closely, you'd stay in town. We try to provide that individual kind of experience. And the, the goal would be if we work close enough with the high school, obviously you can succeed and do well and you want to try to reintegrate into the high school, you're, you're right here. We can try doing it for half-days, you can try doing it for whatever, yes.
Would there be at some point, once the program is up and running and presumably successful, where we would be accepting tuition if, from other districts that wouldn't have that kind of an option?
Yeah, I think we could, I mean, we could look into that, and we don't want to see, we want to gauge the pros and cons and look at the, you know, how they would want to treat that as far as the, the tuitioning cost, how that revenue can be applied, with that, how that rate would be set versus necessarily just a school choice rate necessarily. So I think we'd want to look at, we'd want to look into those things. But I do think the first thing we want to do is make sure that we have a model that we're comfortable with to serve our own needs.
Would all the students involved in this be having some sort of disciplinary issue? Or would there be some students that would attend this that just for whatever reason have difficulty learning and it has nothing to do with getting into trouble or anything like that?
Yeah, so we started a similar program like this in Athol when I was out there. And sometimes some of the students we were able to serve were students that were school-phobic. They just didn't like coming into school, they didn't like the crowds. Were necessarily disciplinary, discipline issue was more of an attendance issue and trying to get them into the building. That was actually some of the people that succeeded very well in this, in this model. And then, so it could be, it could be a variety of cases. Sometimes it could be just someone who is, you know, more behind on credits. They know they want to train, they know what they want to do, they know they want to go to work immediately after. You might be able to work on something with the, with the online courses. Sometimes offering an opportunity to make up additional credits in a timely fashion, so.
But it is, so in addition to that though, but it is also comprised of students unable to attend due to long-term suspension or expulsion, right?
What it would provide us is because we would have those tutors coming down and we would have that resource there. So typically what happens now, we have tutoring line. And if a student gets a long-term suspension, we have to provide, we'd have to provide tutoring. We have to find an alternative placement. So what this would be able to do is, let's say, if a student did get suspended for ten days or a student did get suspended for, you know, the remainder of the year at this point, we would be able to immediately get that person set up with these tutoring services. Where now it's, it's a little bit of a, sort of a lag a little bit because by the time you find out you need the services, then you gotta find someone to do the services. And then pretty much by the time you get set up, everyone's mad because it's a week's gone by and the kid's going back to school and another. So it would provide us that more of that resource that already exists.
So, I mean, it sounds like the disciplined kids would kind of, would be there temporarily from time to time? Whereas the, okay.
And some kids might, you know, and sometimes, like we said, it might be any type of emotional thing. It could be any trauma, it could be whatever it is. If you're, just people who are, you know, that's why it sounds kind of vague, but sort of unable to handle almost a full traditional school day.
Right.
There are a lot of students who, who struggle with that.
Yeah, I'm just trying, is, I'm trying to figure out if like the students are going to be there like almost on a permanent basis or if it's gonna be some sort of a, you know, based on their, their, their plan, maybe they would only be there for a day or maybe that, you know, I'm just trying to...
So yeah, so I think you're right, there could be a mix. There could be students that are there because it's a short-term suspension. They're using that as sort of a drop-in place to get tutoring and assistance. They might only be there for a couple of days, right? They're there this week or next week or a couple of weeks. There's gonna be other students who might be there, you know, they're a sophomore and that's how they want to complete their education, and they're gonna be there for three years. Because that's just what works well for them.
Okay.
There might be a kid that goes there because they're just going through some crazy time and this is the best thing they need and they're there for the rest of the semester. And then we work on, you know, they're, they're in a better place and they want to try to transition back to the high school and we go ahead and do that. So that's why I think the whole thing would be, you know, it would start small. As I said, it might only start with three students in the beginning. And we're gonna be able to tailor it and do individual learning plans and those types of things. But it would be even just, even servicing three students, still could be a savings. So then the next step is, could we use this to help everyone? How, basically looking, could we reinvest those savings? So my idea was if we looked at trying to create some sort of position like a full-time Director of Athletics and Alternative Education, hire a full-time vocational alternative school counselor. That would make the total cost here up to a hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred dollars. We have a projected savings of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That means the difference would be thirty-eight-two, still less than one out-of-district placement tuition. So that if it saved one kid going out, we're still in the good. In the event that those savings did not materialize, the cost could be covered by the school choice account. What this position would do, the half of vocational alternative school counselor, if you remember, we cut that, right? It's one of those things that we proposed in the preliminary budget, kept it in version A, but we pulled it out in version B. So what this would do is this would at least bring that position back. So now we're able to hire a full-time person who would spend probably their mornings basically in the middle school or the high school, helping specialize in vocational and career counseling, and then the afternoons in the alternative program. And if you hired a, we could, if we could find a Director of Athletics, Alternative Education, now you're talking to someone who could serve more of that administrative role for the alternative program, basically handling more of the disciplinary and management-type duties. So the difference is you sort of have these two separate, right? So the counselor would be more of the providing support, working on individual plans, more of kind of your, your guidance and, and support person. And this, the administrative person would be more of the, kind of the management that if they needed to get to disciplinary action, that person would be who handled it. It's, and then that would maybe provide the flexibility so that you have, and I'm talking to a Director of Athletics who half his day roughly is about, is the alternative education program in the afternoon. So you might be able to do some flexible time in the morning. And then that way you can have someone who's more able to attend evening events and those types of things. So that's an option. I'm presenting it because I know those are some things that we, you know, I was trying to find a way, how can we bring back this? I know there have been some inquiries about how we could provide maybe some more athletic director support. So this is, this is sort of how I tried to piece that all together. I think that's, that's about it. I tried to summarize all of that in that handout that you guys should have. I don't know how you want to move forward with that stuff. I mean, I know that's a lot of stuff I just threw out. Yes, that wasn't all in the, in the, in the book. You know, in terms of, does it have any real bottom-line impact on our, like, the general fund or money we'd be asking for from the town? I don't think so. I think, but it's a creative thing that we could try. We could definitely, when I pointed out those kind of the budget reserves in the, you know, you look at what we do have in circuit breaker, when you look at what we do have in, in school choice, I think it's something we could try for a year easily. And if for some reason it didn't pan out the way we wanted it to, at some point we could just say, this, this didn't work the way we wanted it to work, and we, we move forward and it's not gonna, you know, bankrupt us. So, so that's, that's that. So I don't know if you guys have any initial thoughts or takeaways on, on any of that?
Any thoughts?
This, this is not, you know, the alternative school, that, those numbers are not in the budget.
Correct, that's a totally separate thing, so that's what I'm saying. That would come out of, that's why it's almost, but I think it wouldn't change, I guess my point would be, it wouldn't change the, it wouldn't change anything that we'd be asking for the town from in their contribution, right? If we were gonna put that in, basically it would be earmarking some lines that we're in for tuition and transportation over towards this other anticipated, those anticipated expenses and potentially even upping the amount we're gonna use from, from our school choice revolving account as a revenue source. But it wouldn't, we wouldn't, it wouldn't change the, what we're asking the town for.
But likely budget neutral? Pretty close to budget.
Trying to be pretty close to budget neutral. I mean, it gets to, yeah, I mean, that's the goal. And I think, and I ultimately think it will be, even if that, if, if anything, I think it could be budget positive, savings to the good. I think that it's just right now when you project it, you don't want to, you know, I've seen it before where you project that a program is gonna, you know, if we start this program, we'll bring back six kids. And like you said, now you run into, well, now a kid's been in a placement a couple of years and the parents don't want to bring them back and this and that. And now the program brings back two kids. So what was gonna look like it was gonna be a huge savings ended up panning out to not be. But I think based on the small sample size of three, you know, those, those three that I think we have some good, good thoughts about. I mean, and I think these are mostly students, there's, you know, talking about students that were, it's, it's a forty-five-day placement. We're trying to figure out, can the student come back to Clinton next year, to the high school next year? Do they need to stay in a different placement? And I think having this as sort of a buffer is a great way to, to say, hey, why don't you start here? is a great way to, to say, hey, why don't you start here?
What would be a scenario where a student could argue to stay in another program versus coming to our alternative program if we had it? Would it be like if that other program is like more specialized or something like that, or?
Yeah, I think it would determine if we had, so if the student has an IEP that has that as their placement, they can stay in that placement until the team determines. So if we had an IEP meeting and said we wanted to move them here, the parents could reject that if they, if they didn't think it was a good fit, or they didn't, you know, weren't happy with that. I think, you know, it depends on anything, the, each one of these is going to be so individual, right? So it's going to depend on the specific needs of each student and services they might need or require, and really trying to make a match as far as an incorporated environment for them. Even now, when we typically do it at district placement, you know, you're not just sending a kid to one spot, usually you're looking, that parents are going to go look at a couple of spots to try to find that, that right match. I think, I think ultimately moving forward down the road, the, what it's going to allow us to do is to never get to the point of sending a student out necessarily, because we have another option to try to help support them within the district. But I think there is also sort of projected like long-term savings, especially if I think if we could, if it's successful and we can kind of build from that.
So it's less of a chance that student that's going into one of these programs, if they've never been in one before, it's greater chance that we'll be able to keep them, retain them as, less of a chance, someone that's already placed someplace else might be a little bit more of a tug-of-war, I don't know if that's the right phrase to use for that, but you know what I mean, just?
But I think, you know, I think, I think looking at the scenario of the three students that, that we're particularly trying to look at as we look through all of the, the addition placements, I think it's probably likely, or at least a decent chance that those students who want to try to have an opportunity to, to come back and potentially maybe, you know, if they can be successful there, maybe work their way back here. So I think it's, I don't, you know, I don't, I think, we, I think the, the number three is very realistic.
Okay.
Anything else?
All right. So in terms of the budget, I guess the only thing I'd need is if you guys have any, you know, like, so we don't have to vote to approve anything. I guess the only thing I would need from you at this point would be some direction in terms of if we're going to meet, you know, we have a meeting next Monday, we're going to meet with the selectmen and FinCom on Tuesday. If there's any major things that you feel I need to either elaborate on, or you want me to see, you want to be incorporated in, do you want me to include something about, that you want me to go forward with the alternative school proposal, or do you want that? You know, how do you, how would you like me to proceed on those?
Right. So, so I, I think they're, while they're ultimately all part of the budget and the vision that we collectively have for the schools in FY19 moving forward, I think the alternative school proposal, particularly if it's, you know, to look at it as a pilot program, I think unless you want to think about it, I mean, I would entertain a motion to move forward with it.
Which, which the entire thing were, were-
As a pilot program?
Well, I mean, you're saying that the, the part of, do we try to use the savings to add those other-
Right. It's kind of two parts to me.
Right.
Like the first part, you're like, it's a pilot program, but the second part, to spend the money without knowing if in fact it's going to work. You know, there's, you haven't saved this money initially, so that's kind of, that's what brings the money back.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the first time, you know, these, these two positions is what, a hundred and, it was a $135,000 position to, to put those in the budget without having that savings first. You're spending money you don't have.
Yeah, so it's two-part.
Yeah.
But the net, the net to the budget was really, it wasn't that great. Did you say that you'd be able to absorb that with school choice monies if we had to?
We could if we had to. I mean, it's not ideal. I mean, one, one scenario we could do, we could move forward with the budget, the budget as, as it's presented. Kind of still keep this as sort of a separate thing, but know that we're still exploring it as a pilot program. And what that could do is that could actually allow us, if you wanted, to have further conversations, like, with those actual three students, and to try to say, if this is the program we're trying to start next year, we'd like to tailor it around you, meet your needs. And then if we can get more of a firm commitment that, that yes, this is the direction we're going, then we'd be able to be in position to post having those positions and move forward. And so it's up to you, I mean, but that's one, you know, when I try to look at it, because I know the same thing you're saying, I don't want to wipe out, like, yeah, can school choice do it, yeah, but we don't want to wipe it out if-
Like Ed said, if those three students decide they don't want to participate, then we're-
Right. Then you have nothing else to money. Right, right.
So, I guess my, you know, thought would be to do, kind of like Brendan was saying, but to do two phases. So your initial phase might be from the start of school till January, you're able to see what your financial commitment, your student body commitment is to the program, you know what you have as far as monies to be working with. And then after that, on phase two, then you can look at hiring more personnel that might be recommended for the phase two, and give us an opportunity with the support of Dr. Myers to be looking at what needs to be done after that for the phase two piece. Anybody else?
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to go forward with the pilot program for the alternative school, starting with a phase one of the three, you know, potentially three students, not necessarily just returning, but three students into the alternative program, and then to have the school committee reassess where we're at as far as the alternative program in January of the 2019 second half of the year, and then make from the impact of the program and what the potential of the program, future spending and expansion.
Is there a second?
I'll second because I thought that sounded awesome.
Thanks. Okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah. So are we talking about the $105,700 investment, or the $173,200 investment? Because there was, the beginning of it-
We're looking at the hundred, the phase one, I'm looking at the $105,700 of the expense, but of the-
Really, because it's a half-year, you're talking really, at that point it's 52,000 or something like that.
Okay.
Which, but is supported with that savings of the 135?
So it's-
Right, so you save about half that.
Because you're going to be bringing the three tuition costs back in, and then your, the number is not there, but you also have the transportation expense.
And then you also have, you know, some of these estimates, like software rent costs that much for, if we're starting out with three kids. I mean, that's to pay for-
Right.
Ten, so.
So does this also, so does this also include the vocational and alternative school counselor?
I'm saying that-
That's phase two.
That's phase two, okay. That's all I just wanted to be sure of, okay.
So initially, to move forward for a phase one, you would want to see these type of positions posted as a, as part-time positions, with the possibility of expanding into full-time positions pending the outcome of the program or, or something like that.
Right. Because eventually, you know, as, as it works, when you want to bring a student back into a program, a lot of times you have to show them a program to come back to. So as we have program up and running, then I feel like we're going to be bringing people back and have a great opportunity. But then the other thing is, is unfortunately, we come up against a long-term suspension, it might be an appropriate placement.
All right. So why don't I go back?
So we, we have a motion on the floor. So, any other discussion?
No.
So we have a motion that has been made and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the motion as, as detailed by Mr. McIntyre. So moved.
Right. So I will try to put some more information for our meeting next week together that might outline sort of what that, what that would look like in practice, just so that we're on the same page, and that we can make sure that we got that split. At least we have a little bit of direction on following that.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah.
So, no, you go ahead.
Well, I, my point is, and maybe I'm, it's not, I'm not clear on the numbers. So the, what you, the difference between phase one and phase two is the net difference of the $38,200 if we went, if, if we went with the entire proposal.
I mean, the total difference in expenses is about $68,000. So it went from like a $29,000 potential savings to a $30,000 potential cost.
Cost, okay.
So that was, so the net, the net swing there is potentially 68. So I think what we're saying is if we, if we look at holding off a little bit, we can see if we're realizing the savings so that we don't end up on the hook for $173,000 or something like along those lines, and we can kind of see how that goes. So, I think, like I said, I think I can try to put, I'll try to, I'll try to reframe a proposal for this based on like the two-phase, what that might look like. And then if we know we're going to go in that direction, then I think I can work with Kathy, and we can try to maybe start even reaching out to some of those families and say, listen, this is what we want to do. What's your level of interest? How do you feel about this? And then we can get a better sense of what that looks like.
And then I just had a budget question.
Yeah.
So I know over the summertime, maybe last summer, it was brought to our attention that we were eligible for potentially free and reduced lunches for potentially all students.
Yeah.
But at the time, you helped us out and you explored and realized that there was going to be a financial impact to the district to be able to run that particular program. Have you had an opportunity to look at making adjustments now for the following year to see, would there still be that financial impact to run that program, or is there ability to make adjustments so that we can have that in place for our families?
We can look into that because I know, I mean, I haven't looked into it yet. I haven't looked into it since last summer, so that's the first, that's the first answer.
Right.
But it is one of the things that is on our, I think, are you going to a training on that?
Yeah, I was going to say, Nan and I are going to a training on, on that framework just to apply again. So that will be coming up in the next like month.
Yeah.
And then we'll see what we evaluate, because we're going to apply again. We're going to apply every year, and then see where we are. So that would be coming up, I think.
It's fairly soon. I remember seeing the email that you guys are going. So they're, so I know we have, they're going to look into it, see what changes they've made to the community eligibility provision or whatever, to see how it might impact us. But I also know that, that we've been working with, trying to work with food services, and we'll continue to work with food services right now, looking at just our budget overall, how those things work, and what we might, what we might need to change to try to do that.
If we could just, you know, see what those numbers are, because from what I understand from doing a little research after the fact, our students, if we were a part of that program, would get free applications to certain colleges, certain college boards, whether they'd be at a discounted rate. So there's a lot of other things that they get a discount for.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so we'll, I mean, certainly we'll re-explore, if it's something we're eligible for, then, I mean, if we're eligible for it, we can make financially-
This past summer, it was, it was a large loss of money, so it makes sense, but-
All right. Any other questions on the budget as it stands? Are you guys comfortable with moving forward with budget version B with the selectmen and the finance committee and getting their, their feedback?
We, we have a meeting-
We have a meeting the day before, the 26th, yeah. So as I'm saying, if you had any questions, revisions, or things you wanted me to change, we have an opportunity to change that for our Monday meeting.
Okay.
And then we could do that, but I just need to know, you know, if you could add those. And then we could do, then Tuesday we would do the presentation with selectmen and FinCom. We'll find out, you know, what, I haven't had a lot of detailed conversations with them yet. So find out where they stand on this, what, how they feel about more dardical numbers, how they feel about the budget numbers, and then, and then we can see how we need to respond. And then hopefully we can make whatever necessary adjustments we need to make in time for our April 9th meeting, and hopefully, hopefully by then we're, we're pretty, we're pretty good to go.
So I guess I would ask then that if there are questions or concerns or, or other information that you need from Dr. Meyer or Ms. Sheridan, that you get it to them as soon as possible. Okay, great.
All right. All right. All right, so those are first agenda items.
We're not adjourning?
Yeah.
Just getting warmed up.
Getting all my papers ready. So we have, you have the, this giant packet, I'm just going to try to go through page by page. No, I'm just kidding. This is the Masbo Financial Operations of you, this is their, this is their findings. I actually don't even want to talk about it at all. I want to hand it to you and let you know that you got it. You guys can review it. Karen and I will put together a summary of the commendations and recommendations and some action steps that we're taking, and we'll present that hopefully at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. It's, you know, we'll make sure that we review it and have any questions.
Just wait for you to read it to us. The pre-K update, just want to make sure everyone knows that the lottery, lottery was held, I believe. Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, letters went out today.
Yep.
Okay. So everyone should be getting a letter. Everyone who was in the lottery was able to be offered a position, a slot, wasn't necessarily their first choice, but Rob tried to make sure we made some phone calls and tried to sort it out the best we can as far as first choice, second choice, transportation, all that stuff. So, so that should be underway, and anyone who's waiting should get a, hopefully by the time the article's in the paper, they'll have already got their letter.
So no, no one was turned away at all?
No one was turned away.
Safety update, there is a, there is a policy in here that it's a, policy JIH, searches and interviews. And so when the policy subcommittee met last, this was the one about searching lockers and, and bringing basically drug sniffing dogs. And the recommendation that the policy committee at the time was to have it, you know, basically run it by legal. So we checked with our attorneys, this is the policy they drafted for us, for policy JIH. And, you know, so, you know, at this point, I don't know if you've had a chance to review it, if you would like, you know, if you'd like to move forward with it at this point, that's, that's fine. If you want to, you know, revisit it at a future meeting, it's, it's whatever the, whatever the pleasure of the committee is. We're going to approve it as a first reading, and we'll bring it back next time for a second reading.
Make a motion to approve it as a first reading.
Second approval for first reading?
Motion being made in second. Is there any discussion on policy JIH as a first reading? There being none. All those in favor of accepting JIH as a first reading? So moved.
Well, we've never had something like that, like this.
We had, we had a similar one, but it was not as comprehensive and definitely didn't have like the dog sniffing part in it. So we had more of a generic searches by school administrators policies. Probably still on our website if you wanted to, probably still JIH on our website if you wanted to look it up to compare for the next meeting. All right. So did you guys vote on that already?
We did.
Sorry, I missed that. All right. School community, school safety community forum, I guess. So that was held last Thursday. I mean, I thought it was well-attended, there was about 50 people there. I think it, as far as nerve-wracking as it was for me when I was waiting for people to show up, I think ultimately everyone got there, and it turned out, turned out well, thanks to Ed for getting, making it, getting it videotaped.
No, I think it-
Teenage was there.
I think it went well. I think it was, I counted about 50 community members there, and I thought it was well-organized with having the police, the representative, state rep, Naughton, you, so it was like kind of the three institutions that are responsible for the safety, all there. Each person gave their perspective, and like their, their roles, responsibilities, their plan, their vision for safety. And then at the end of it, it just opened it up to anyone in the community for questions, concerns, some suggestions from some of the community members. But it was, I, I think it couldn't have, I don't, I think it couldn't have gone better. I think it was a really good, a good event.
One of the things that was mentioned at that one, at that community forum, Kim, was Alice training. Just wanted, just give an update that we did have three staff members who were, did attend the Alice training, one from each, one from each building. And our safety committee meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday to, with the police, with our whole safety committee meeting, but to, to review, start looking at our Code Blue and looking at the Alice principles, and see how we can make some immediate adjustments that we might want to make moving forward. The facilities updates, so there's a national grid, there's kind of a sideways sheet in your packet here. There's some, there's some energy savings improvements that we can make with national grid. And if you can see, sort of when you look at this sheet, at that first kind of row of numbers, there's projects on Clinton High School lighting, Clinton High School motors and drives, middle school lighting, middle school motors and drives, and these D-strat fans. And so the total cost for all of those upgrades would be $323,000. There's a national grid incentive, which would take $101,000 off of those projects, bringing in the net cost to Clinton. bringing in the net cost to Clinton of $221,000. They're able to, National Grid is able to finance that for zero percent over three years, right on our electric bill. And then the up, the only upfront cost we'd have to pay is $30,896. Then if you look, there is, so the projected energy savings each year. Need to find that here. So the annual estimated electrical savings is about, it's about $50,000. They have a total estimated savings per year, $51,000 for those repairs. So you could see it would pay, the project would pay for itself by year three. And then in year, you know, you look at the projection like year four and year five, we would have significant energy savings. On top of that, I think this would be a way to address some areas, particularly like one of the, like one of the lighting areas that we would fix immediately would be like the middle school gym, right? So that's, that's had, you know, led to a lot of complaints and concerns. I know I probably would have had way more points in that faculty basketball game if the lighting were better. But, but the, but the, you know, so that'd be, it's a way for us to address some of those things, moving into, you know, basically replacing a lot of these fixtures with LED fixtures and reduce, reduce costs. So, you know, it looks like it would, it would pay for itself. It might have a small cost, a small increase in cost for next year, but it really shouldn't be, you know, in terms of, in terms of electrical approximations, it's not a substantial, you know, increase in terms of energy approximations. The major cost would be, if we wanted to move forward that project, the upfront cost of $31,000. So I guess part of what I'm bringing to you to see if you'd like us to go forward with this, we could use the 30, we could use $31,000. We could charge it to our, we could basically charge it to like our facilities, main facilities line item for right now. And then as we track that throughout the rest of the year, if we go over, we could bump some into the rental facilities. We could just kind of see how that goes as we look at our overall budget. You know, we feel like between the, between the rental facilities revolving accounts and sort of the way our budget is tracking right now, you know, we feel like we could probably absorb that, that investment right now if we want to potentially look to the long-term savings and upgrades to the facility.
Would anyone like to make a motion to enter into this agreement with National Grid?
I'll make the motion, but I also have a comment.
So is there a second to the motion? Then we'll have discussion on it.
One second.
Mr. Bailey? Any discussion?
I was just wondering if this is something that the Director of Facilities would have anything to do with?
Yep. He's, he would be, he's like the number one contact for it. So it was actually the meeting where we were looking at this, it was me, Russ, and Karen.
Oh.
So that we, you know, Karen was doing, did a lot of the financial breakdown to make sure that the, you know, they provided a lot of these numbers, but us, you know, Karen did a lot of work to try to verify what it looked like. But Russ was in there too, to make sure, you know, Russ was one that spoke to the, the need for it. The, the D-strat fans, I don't know what D-strat stands for, but I guess it was basically circulation fans to try to help with the improved the heating and efficiency class. He thought that those were things that were greatly needed in our, in, in the buildings, particularly in our gymnasium areas. So I think that they are, so he's, he was all for it and thought that they were.
Did they call them all the municipal buildings in town or was it just the schools?
I don't know if they did all the buildings yet. I know that, because I know why, we had had National Grid, I had basically scheduled National Grid to come in and do it before Russ was on board because they had reached out, they reached out to me. So I, you know, we set it up and they worked with Mr. Hastings to come here. And that's where I think this is where we started. And then, then it's kind of passed on to Russ, so.
Any other discussion on the motion that's on the table?
I have a question. So the, so the $19518 in financing plus the $30,000, $3896, is that, that is the, if you look at the total cost per year, year one, two, and three, the 88, 63, and 63, is that, I know I kind of bounced around through a lot of different numbers at you, but...
Yeah, that would work.
Okay. So that's where, okay, so it's the, the financing plus our upfront cost is the, is where that, that total cost per year for year one, two, and three come from?
Yeah. So the thing is, the, the D-strat fans, for whatever reason, can't be, maybe that's what's part of the confusion. You see that $30,896 number?
Yeah.
See above that in that column, there's a 25018.
Sure. Oh, okay.
25018, they're really only going to finance the lighting, motors, and drives projects because that's the only one eligible for the financing.
Gotcha.
Those, those fans are a lot, you know, they're, the fan project itself is only $6,000, but it adds a substantial energy savings.
Sure, okay.
So we would, so part of the upfront cost would be paying basically the entire fan project. So that might be why those numbers don't quite, if you're trying to find where that $30,000 is, it's not there. The 25 is there.
Gotcha. All right.
Anything else?
The second option has the baby name.
Oh, yeah, the bottom one. Sorry, the bottom one has the D-strat fans. And then see where it says year one?
Mm-hmm.
And the, the cost is a little bit higher. So it has that, so see how the savings goes? So the, the net cost per year is, is $10,000. The bottom is the, is the option. The bottom group is the one we'd want to go for with the fans included.
Mm-hmm.
Because it increases the energy savings and it, and it increases the upfront cost a little bit, but then the, the cost in the subsequent years is less.
Gotcha.
And then the savings would be greater after. It's about, just under three years is the break-even point and then.
So how long, so this is like, they're basically giving us like a loan for?
For three years, yeah.
So it's a three-year, it's a three-year loan? Okay.
Yeah. At zero percent, right?
Zero percent.
Yeah. Because it's part of their energy incentives. They're not trying to, it's not really to make money on the loan. It's to make it an affordable project for, for places.
And at the same time, we improve the lighting in the facilities and, and make them more energy efficient at the same time.
And the HVAC. I mean, it'll help us with those controls too, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Nice work.
All right. We're getting there. The next one is the MSBA Statement of Interest Vote. So we talked about putting in a statement of interest for the middle school. So this would be, we would be putting in, basically asking for the replacement renovation or modernization of the school, of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation, decrease energy-related costs in the school facility, and the replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. That would be the two categories that's in, so there is this motion right here, that we would be applying for an MSBA, basically to try to get in their pipeline to do a renovation of the middle school. But that was pretty much where, where we felt we would be at this point and which one we would qualify for. In order for us to submit that, we need to have a, I need to have a vote by the school committee, basically this kind of verbatim. And then we also need to get a vote by the Select Board, so we're working with Mike to try to get on their agenda so that we can, we can do it. I think I might even be on his agenda for Wednesday.
So would this initiative interfere with either the, because we're, aren't we putting, we're putting solar panels up on the, on the roof of the middle school, right?
So the solar panels right now, we had, it's a good update for you. We did have a conversation probably last week with the town, it was, it was a conference call. It was Russ, me, and the town's council. And right now, what they're looking at is we're trying to get the, a new roof as part of the solar panel, okay? Because right now, our roof is not going to last 20 years.
Right.
So if we put solar panels on it, at some point, we're going to have to take them down.
Right.
Fix a roof and put them back up.
Yeah.
And that was part of the, the thought all along, is that if we could use energy savings, finance a new roof, at least we got a free roof out of it.
Right.
The town council right now is sort of questioning how the bid process would go with that and how they've done that in other communities and those types of things. So, so that's kind of getting hung up in, getting hung up in legal right now. So where that goes, I'm not sure. I don't think it, it impacts that at all. This doesn't really bind us to anything. All it does is, we're asking the MSBA, saying, we'd like to do something for our building.
Right.
And they're gonna, and if we get invited in, then we would do feasibility studies and look at things.
But that, 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 the initiative for the solar panels, part of that was they, they did, they examined the integrity of the roof of the middle school, right? So is that where that determination of that the, the roof won't last, where did that determination come from? Did, was it included in that, in that report or is that somebody else's?
I think it was, well, I think we went back to them after, because they first came back to us and said the roofs were, that were structurally sound.
Right.
Meaning they would hold the weight of the panels. And then it was really, basically, you know, even, I think Russ might even have been the one that initiated the conversation with them, where we had them come back out and look at the actual condition of the roof surface.
Okay.
Because now we're saying like, hey, you know, there's patches here, there's places where puddles here, there's those types of things.
So it's kind of getting into that scenario that we talked, where they said the roof is okay and we kind of are saying, we're not sure that it is.
Right. But they seem to be, they seem to be.
Agreeing.
Agreeing. They're trying to say, okay, yeah, we'll work on, here's what we can do to repair the roof. So now we're saying, well, show us how that's legal and how you're not going to bid out $180,000 or $200,000 roof resurfacing project.
Okay. So you're saying like, we have to be involved in the, in the process of, of like, because they're going to handle the bidding?
Right. They would have to hand, I mean, well, that's, that's our question right now.
Yeah.
How do they handle this? Because they're saying like, well, they can, it's almost like they're trying to do it all under, under the, the solar energy procurement.
Sure.
And our lawyers are saying, the roof upgrades.
We have our own.
Aren't necessarily a solar procurement. It's more our energy savings. It's a, it's a capital improvement.
Okay.
So that's what we're trying to work on right now.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily dead.
Yep.
It's just kind of, we're working on it.
I think it's important for everyone to understand that this is, this is nothing more than the first step in a long process in saying that we are committed to working with MSBA if they're committed to working with us. It's, it's essentially an introduction.
Exactly. So it doesn't commit us to any, even when you read the whole thing, it doesn't commit, first of all, they, they spell out if this doesn't commit them to pay anything, but it doesn't, it doesn't commit us to do anything either. I mean, it's just, it's like you said, it's good. It's an introduction, yeah.
Do we, so whoever makes the motion have to read this entire thing?
I don't know. I don't know if you, my fear would get away with just the motion as written.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the MSBA Statement of Interest as written in our packet.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right. Old Tire Station, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Duffy, and, yeah, you don't know either, do you? One of the local business owners in town. Yeah. She came down and visited with us and we went to Technicopia, which is a makerspace area in Worcester. So we got a nice tour of how they're set up. They, they're essentially more of the, you know, the best parallel, I know Phil, Phil said this before when he's talked about it, is sort of the, the kind of almost like the gym membership type parallel where they, you know, people can, they pay for a membership to the makerspace and then they can drop in and use it. There's all the different equipment that they have. Theirs even has, you know, like almost individual desks or workspace, workstations that people could rent at a separate cost and it's kind of their private space. So we just got to look at that, that, the, the people at Technicopia, the people that in the grant proposal from the Urban Agenda Grant were identified, I think there's a small amount to work, to pay them to work as sort of a consultant on looking at a makerspace model and, and design. The other component of the Urban Agenda Grant is sort of the feasibility study and looking at the structure of the building itself. And when I met with Phil to talk about it, we're currently looking on, working on getting multiple quotes for that because it should land in that area of below $50,000. So it's not like a building committee project that doesn't need to go to a full bid, but it's going to need to have at least, at least the three quotes. So we'll have to get that.
But Paul, I thought the structure portion of the firehouse study was, I thought that was already completed. The structurally sound.
Yes, the overall structure, but you needed to come back and let an architect go. They, you know, which way are the floor joists going?
Okay.
You know, how much weight are you going to put on each floor? What are your, and for each floor? So they can assess if there's any more structure, you know, support needed.
Gotcha.
But the overall, what we commissioned a few years, about a year and a half ago was, is the building sound?
Right. Right. Okay.
I think our, our RFP, you know, what we would put out for this would be about, I think we would also be looking more for cost estimates for those things. So like to do the upgrade of the, okay, you telling us we need to add an elevator?
Right.
What's the projected cost for that, those types of things? So, so we'll continue to work on that. But I, so we are, you know, that grant was awarded. We are, we are moving forward with that. So just wanted to make an update that stuff is happening. Recent conferences, we sent a couple people to the Mass Q Conference. That was, Mike McHeckern and Megan Silvio attended that. Got some, some great ideas there. The same day, I was able to go to the DESE Next Generation Accountability System Conference. And that's, that's interesting. There's going to be a much greater focus on what they're looking at is your bottom 25% cohort. So now instead of looking at, so they said, you know, in the past, accountability system has looked at closing achievement gaps, right? And what they said was, what they didn't like about that was, is two ways to close a gap, right? You can raise the lower group or you can drop the top group. So sometimes, some, there were some deficiencies in their, in their previous model. And they said, what is it they really want to accomplish? And so what they want to accomplish is really raising the level of achievement for, they want to raise that, that floor, right? So they're going to look at your bottom 25% threshold. And then the, the one thing they're looking at for that is it's a cohort. So the only kids that'll count in that 25% are kids who were, for a district, it'll be kids who were in your district the previous year, took two years of test data in your school, for your school, it'll be kids that are in your school two years, which could be a different set of kids, right? So if the fourth grade moves to fifth grade, fifth grade won't necessarily count for the middle schools. I guess I should, that's the most confusing one I could pick right now because they're changing. But the, when you shift from one school to the other, your first year in a school, you won't necessarily count, the lowest 25 wouldn't count to that school because you weren't there the year before. But they would count for the district if you were in the district.
So here's, high schools still count to their sophomores.
Right. And then they're going to look at the, which it wouldn't anyway really because they don't take the, the freshman test, but yeah. And then they're, the, the high school, they're doing it a little bit differently because of that, where it's going to be based sort of, it is still going to be a little bit, now they're still on the, the old MCAS up here. So it'll be a little more on the, it'll be the bottom 25% of like different years kind of compared, not literally the same kids. So they're going to look at that. They're, they're saying that they're going to be able to identify those kids in the, you know, in the fall. So you would even know who those kids are. So you could try to work with them if you wanted to throughout the course of the year. The, some other things that they are now taking into consideration is for, for high schools, you can get, there's a certain score weighted to percentage of students taking advanced class, advanced coursework. So that could be dual enrollment coursework. It could be AP coursework. There's a couple other things like international baccalaureate programs, those types of things. So your percentage of students enrolled in those courses counts as an indicator. And then the, you know, a lot of the stuff is the same in terms of the, the, you know, attendance and dropout rate and achievement and growth and those types of things. So, so it was interesting. They walked it through. They are planning on, you know, now that they'll have, with this year's testing, they will have two years of data. They are planning on using the system for, for next year. It really will be made based up 50% on, 50% of your accountability rate will be based on the performance of your entire population. 50% is going to be based on the population of your lowest 25% cohort. So there's some, a lot to, a lot to look into and we'll see how that goes. But last day of school, professional development makeup. So right now, the last day of school is Monday, June 18th. So I say that's right now, you know, Wednesday is coming, I guess. So who knows what will happen. But the, we were fairly fortunate, I guess, in that the last snow day was actually on our full professional development day. So that was on March 13th. So I did a survey to the staff to kind of see what they would look at, what they would like to do to make it up. Options were for adding a day to the end of the year, adding a day over April vacation, adding a Saturday, or adding some additional time throughout the rest of the year. Because unlike with students, with students, we have two requirements, right? We have a days and hours type requirement. We don't necessarily have the days requirement with the teachers if we were able to make that time up in other, in other areas. with the teachers if we were able to make that time up in other, in other areas.
It's not contractual?
Not necessarily the way our current contract is written, but yeah.
Oh, because it's spread out over the opportunities that they have during that time?
Yeah, so, yeah. So there were a hundred and forty-six responses to the staff survey. Fifty-three point four percent responded that they'd like to make up the time on March 30th and other after-school meetings, which is one of the options we gave. So the scheduling logistics of this would be, March 30th right now is Good Friday. So traditionally, what we've done, I guess, or recently, what's, what the practice has been here, is that we've had a half-day on Good Friday. It's actually a very early, it's one of those earlier release half-days, like, almost, not quite as early as Thanksgiving, I think some, you know, middle time there. And typically, when we dismissed, we dismissed everybody. So staff were dismissed and, and students were dismissed. What this would do is this would change that from an early release day to a professional development day. So staff, instead of getting out early that half-day, would stay, we would get two and a half hours of professional development in there. That would allow us to do the trainings that we were scheduled for on the 13th that are listed there under those bullets. Then we would add an additional hour on April 24th, basically a second faculty meeting that month, an additional hour on May 8th, that's a PD day already. So that would give us a three-hour window that day, really, you know, more like a three-hour window, not a two-hour window, where we'd be able to do the foundations training that was scheduled on the 13th, and then add additional hour on May 22nd. So basically, gets those five and a half hours of PD time back, but it does it by spreading it out this way in times that we wouldn't have had. From my perspective, I think this is better than adding professional development to the end of the year, because I feel like doing PD in the last day of school is not, and I tell you, we had people actually suggesting the other in this, they suggested, could we just move it to the beginning of next school year? Which, if it weren't for the financial mess of it all, I'd love to do that, because I'd much rather have a PD day. But once we roll in the next fiscal year, that's, that's, it's going to be a mess. So, so I don't know how the committee feels about this. I think it's a way for us to be, you know, get this professional development time in with our staff, at a time where hopefully we would have the majority of our, we would have our staff members here. We wouldn't be, you know, bringing people back in on April and dealing with, you know, thirty people that all of a sudden had trips planned in advance or something like that. So, so if you're, you know, it's a unique situation, if you're comfortable with it, we can go forward with this plan. If you have any other questions or concerns, I can bring something else back to you.
Just a quick question. How would you handle the attendance of individuals that could not make the half the hours commitment due to either sporting, extrapricular, or already committed to, you know, second or third job?
Yeah. I think we'd have to probably look at that on a case-by-case basis. I mean, it's similar to the fact that they have to stay for a faculty meeting for an hour anyway. So that was part of the logistics of not making it more than an hour, because there are times during, during the month that they have to stay that long anyway. I think if we had a particular case, maybe like a coach or something that was going to miss all of these days, we might have to come up with an alternative structure. Or, or have them use some sort of personal day or something like that.
I know you mentioned that the last professional development was scheduled day off. And Mrs. Sargent, if you could, I've tried to explain to my son Ryan now several times, he's not entitled to an additional day off. And it's not just him, all his sixth-grade friends, and I told him I'd bring this up in the meeting tonight, they're convinced that we, because the snow day was their already scheduled day off, that you guys owe him another day. So if you grab the sixth graders, because, boy, I happen to know luck with them, so you can just tell them.
We are giving him a day, January, June 19th.
That's all I heard all day, is how you guys owe him another day. So I told him I'd bring that up at the meeting tonight.
So I don't, you know, I don't think.
Can we appoint his son to the calendar committee in a year, because that might solve two problems?
He was convinced.
So, you know, we did, like I said, we did, I did feel like the best way to handle this was to put it up to the staff for a survey. We did get that, it was more than a, you know, fifty-three point four was the majority, and it was also overwhelmingly the, the number one vote, given the other things were, were spread out very differently. So, you know, I feel like it's something that we can, we can live with, we can still be productive, and it allows us to, to move on. I don't think it's something that we're setting any type of precedent, this is just a response to the weather.
And this is informational, you don't need us to act on it?
I mean, it's up to you, if you guys are fine, I mean, you vote on the calendar, so if you wanted to accept this as an alternative for the 13th, that might make things a little cleaner.
I'll make a motion to accept this as an alternative to the 13th.
I'll second.
Any, any further discussion on the motion to accept the proposal for the missed March 13th professional development day? Are there being none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
It's after eight-thirty, the motions come pretty quick.
Do we have anything new under, I know the policy committee met, and we took that up under the superintendent's report, anything from either the policy committee or the marketing committee?
Nothing from the marketing committee.
Okay. Anything under old business?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, Joel. Besides, I know, right after I said that. The Steam Fair, moving the date to April 12th, with, and we're going to do it a little bit different this year. We're going to have, April 12th is going to be kind of like an open house for everyone from the community to come in, and then April 13th, Friday of the 13th, by the way, and Marie, is going to be when the, the volunteer judges will judge, and then we'll have a, some type of a student assembly for the awards ceremony. Okay, yeah. So that's it for the marketing committee, sorry.
Anything else? Anything under old business? Anything under new business?
Could I bring up one thing under new business?
Sure.
So right now, we are currently scheduled to have a meeting on April 23rd. We're also scheduled a strategic planning meeting on April 23rd, but that's the Monday after vacation. It's also the, also happens that Mary won't be here that day. And if you know, that's, April's one of those like five Monday months, so we would have three weeks between that meeting and our first meeting in May. So I was wondering if it was possible to reschedule the April 23rd meeting to April 30th, just push it back one week, keep it on a Monday. It just gives us a little bit more time there, it doesn't have it right after the vacation.
I can do it. Anyone else have some issues? Can we have a motion to move the school committee meeting on April 23rd to the 30th of April?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? Looks, seems to fit everyone's calendars. Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
We do have.
I know, I know, yeah. So, under chapter 30A, section 21 of Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting Law, the committee will enter into executive session to discuss collective bargaining with the Clinton Teachers Association. Committee will not reconvene.